So I'm calling needing to order, um, I guess it's six oh four now. And that this uh, meeting is being recorded via Zoom. Uh, due to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Oakland County, um, emergency orders. And, and I am in Oakland County, City of Lathrow Village. Do I, I don't need to do, do I need to do roll call, you think?
There's no uh, roll call for study session, but if, if the members of council that are here participating could announce their location.
Yeah, Bruce Kanter, Oakland County, Lathrow Village, Michigan.
Yeah, in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Yeah. Oakland County Bat Cave, Lathrow Village.
Anna Stallings, home Lathrow Village.
Um, so first discussion, I know marijuana licensing and application process.
So I had a conversation with Jill today about this, um, and we're, we should have both this draft zoning ordinance. And general ordinance ready for the uh, proposed joint meeting on the thirtieth. If uh, Suzie, are we still planning on doing that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, yeah, we, that's our target date to have that um, circulated to everybody, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
And included in your packet was the memo that the plan received relative to the.
Anyone have any questions? Um, um. Anybody, do you have any questions concerned? Discussion?
Nope, just looking forward to, just looking at the initial draft.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, no questions.
Committee update?
Yeah, um, somebody, somebody needs to mute their mic. Looks like there's some kids yelling or something. Oh, it stopped. Um, yeah, so infrastructure committee update, uh, just uh, good news. Um, you know, we had our. Uh, ballot initiative passed, uh, got sixty-two percent of the vote, so that was, that was great news. I had no idea what to expect going into the election, so that was, that was good. So we will get seven point one miles of new roadway. Um, Cheryl, myself and the city engineer Scott Ringler are, are meeting tomorrow. To kind of kick things off, um, figure out what the next steps are. And then once we determine that, uh, more than likely, I will get the infrastructure committee back together because they're the ones, at least per, per the recommendation that, that we approved. Are going to recommend the uh, particular roads that get done each, each year out of the seven point one miles and as well as the special assessment districts for. Uh, the, the ditch portion of, of the, the project as well, so. I will keep you guys up to date and what's going on once, once, once we meet tomorrow, so.
Congratulations to.
Yeah, I give up on that. We didn't give up on it. Really good results.
Good result.
You want to give us some insight as to. You have any insight for us as to uh, how you're gonna approach this thing?
Well, start with.
Now that you can talk about it.
What's that?
Now that you could talk about it.
Yeah, just start with the meeting tomorrow and figure out, you know, where, where we go from there. I, I, I don't have any particular, I mean, you know, we've, we've got. Eleven miles of eligible road and seven point one miles to pick, so, um, you know.
Yep.
I'm guessing, at least based on earlier discussions with uh, Scott, that um, you know, we'll probably do, I'm, I'm gonna guess. Probably a, a mile, mile and a half in the first year and then do more in the second and the third year, so. But again, that's, that's all speculative. We just, you know, I gotta talk to Scott and, you know, figure out how we, how we, we start this up, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is the sign ordinance update.
You want, uh, Suzie, or do you want me to talk about this? I mean, so what?
We, uh, we had a pretty good conversation. I, um, at the uh, planning commission meeting, I have to look back to my, look back to my notes. Um, for the study session, we spent the bulk of our time on this, and so they had some, uh, they had some good comments. Um, really, I mean. The, the bulk of it was, um, the bulk of the amendments was to make sure it's uh, content neutral. Um, and they, um, it's not really uh, an issue for the planning commission, dealing with the sign ordinance itself, right? So, um, since it's for council to make the, the ultimate call on it, but um. One of the things that they really, um, focused on was uh, illumination and the temporary signs. Um, so they talked about things like changing the, um, making sure the, the color of the lighting. And, you know, associating, you know, associating that with the bat, like backlit signs. Um, and really, we were talking about, you know, the, the perforated, we talked about murals, whether or not they're signs. Ultimately, we're gonna have uh, some updates to the, the draft that you all have seen and wish to have that for you. At your next meeting and at the end of the month.
I think it was gonna come back to planning commission just uh, to make sure that everything was incorporated, that um, their suggestions. And then, and then uh, then it would be presented to city council.
Double check that with Jill, too.
Yeah, that would be nice, just given how many cha, you know, the, the, the amount of changes that we had to the initial draft, just so we could see it all, the planning commission could all see it again. Makes sense.
Um, next up is the house in the woods update.
So also at the um, planning commission, as part of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we are putting together our priority redevelopment sites. This is also um. One of the tasks under the redevelopment ready communities certification that we have. Um, and so, thought this is a great opportunity to, um, you know, highlight some of these things, and I know we've obviously been talking about this for quite some time. What are we gonna do with it? And um, I think Cheryl, you included the dra, the concept in the packet, right? So um. In the packet, we talked, you know, we've always uh, considered, you know, getting three, maybe four houses on there, and. Uh, Giffords Webster came up with a concept that would put um, ten houses. On there, and it'd be a smaller footprint house with a smaller footprint yard. So their original proposal was a little bit more dense and the planning commission um. Liked it, but wanted it scaled back a little bit. Um, so that's what you have in your packet. I really like it personally. Um, it's out of the box, right? It's, it definitely forced everyone to think a little bit differently. It would fit in to the R three, um, being that R three allows for varied setbacks and um. A little bit different density layout, so this would um. It's an in, interesting answer to, you know, those older adults or those, um, those younger folks that don't want the responsibility of a larger yard, but still want to be in town.
So. It looks really, um, I mean, the, the idea might be there, but for me, I just had a really hard time. It just looks like the people that would live on the outside of the circle, that that would be a lot of activity in their backyard, you know? It's interesting, but it was just.
It is interesting, but, and I agree with you, um, Kelly, that it would be. I think a little, if I lived on the circle, it would be a little intrusive, too, for me, but.
Well, I think, I, if you're looking for, I mean, anybody that's looking for that style of housing, though, I think they would be, um. They wouldn't be surprised by that, right? It's definitely a, like I said, it's a higher density. That, so, you know, if you're, if you're looking for acreage, like what I have or something, or a bigger backyard, then, I mean, that's obviously not gonna be the house for you, but.
No, I'm not talking about the um, people that would move into it. I'm talking about the people that already are existing there, the ones that already have.
Gotcha. Okay.
And to clarify, that's, I was also addressing that as well.
I believe that uh, that density probably would attract younger uh, buyers, so I think it's a plus for the city. Yeah, you know.
Talking about the, the, the people that would come in, I'm talking about the existing resident. We also have to be conscious of the existing residents that live on the circle. That live around.
Right.
The house in the woods, and it just looks a little intrusive to me.
Right.
Yeah, wasn't, wasn't part of the update here supposed to be the, the appraisal that we got?
Yeah.
So I, in your packet, you do have the um, the copy of the, the appraisal that we, we received. And relative to that, I, I needed some direction relative to the next steps. And I guess part of that discussion would need to be.
What we were talking about just a minute ago. I knew where you're going, Cheryl, thank you, but um. Um, I, I wanted to uh. Ask about the people that already put the, you know, that inquired about a single house that was there.
Well, the first step he wanted me to do was to get the, the. The uh, a value for that property, which is considerably more than um, what they had proposed, although they were looking at one or two homes on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was the whole reason for why we asked for the appraisal, was to determine whether or not the forty-five thousand dollars that they offered for that was a reasonable offer.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, uh, Bruce, it was just the, the, the fact was is that we were kind of working that way, um, about talking about what was there and then kind of letting.
Right. Yeah.
And so when you're saying, what, what direction do we go in now, um. I think the last, I, I think that the last time we talked with uh, God, what was her name, um. The last.
Lori Bell.
Yes.
Lori Bell.
Yes, thank you. Um, she was saying that we had to come up with kind of like how we want, what, what our vision was for the uh, the property. And so I know that as we were speaking about the, the houses that's in our package, that's kind of where. I was kind of figuring out, yeah, where do we go? Do we, we have, we don't have to. Choose that, or we just need to put some more, some. Some uh, God help me tonight, I got too much stuff.
More thoughts. More thoughts.
I did not have more than one email at the same.
I mean, maybe, I mean, maybe one, one thought is just list the property for two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
But I think some, um, some parameters around it, so you don't end up with houses that, like, that wasn't our, our package, right?
Because the two seventeen is based on the land itself, correct?
Right.
Correct, but that's, that's the rabbit hole that we, we went down two years ago, which, you know, we've been go, we've been spinning in circles since then.
No, not really.
On the property.
Yeah, we didn't have the, um, the actual appraisal of the property.
Right, but we, okay, go ahead.
But I'm thinking now that we have the appraisal of property, we know exactly what directions that we go into, and I really think that we need to um, really be conscious of what. What a homeowner that is an existing homeowner, take into account how they would feel in, in something like that, but I do agree that it does need to be listed. But I think that it needs to be some type of parameters around what our expectations are for the property.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this question. So if, let's just say we sell the property to whoever, there's gonna be redevelopment on that property. Obviously, as, as long as they adhere to ordinance requirements and zoning laws and licensing. It really, the, the residents around that keyhole, I mean, it is what it is. You're gonna develop that property. We can't say, well, you know, since. We've got residents in there and they may feel a little funny about you guys breaking ground. We can't do that. We could, we, we basically are going to list the property. And whoever buys it is gonna buy it and adhere to our ordinances and we move forward. We've, we've achieved our success, which is the goal that we've had for the last three years. That's my thoughts on it.
Yeah, and Ian, you're spot on with that. I mean, all, at the end of the day, um, you can certainly engage in discussion and conversations, and if you have multiple buyers that are interested in the property. With different ideas and plans, it's ultimately the choice of city of council, who they want to sell the property to. So, to some degree, yeah, you, you do have some control if. A developer is interested in putting, you know, eight to ten small units, or if it's a, a individual that's looking to put one larger home there, so. You do have some degree of control over it, but, but ultimately, at the end of the day, uh, they're going to be required to comply with the city's ordinances and uh, that, that's gonna be. Ultimately, the maximum amount of control that you'll have, have on what goes there.
So do we have the control? Does it lie in, do they, when they bid on it, do they um, talk about what they want to do with it? Is that where our control comes in?
Well, just gotta comply with.
An RFP. Yeah, you'd have to do an RFP if you really wanted to have the maximum amount of control over what happens on that property, you would. Go, go out for a development RFP and say, these are the parameters, you know, we want to see. You know. Eight to ten houses, I, you know, whatever, and then you go through that process.
I could have swore that that's the whole reason, uh, of what we were doing before, when um, we brought Lori, Lori Bell won the uh, RFP before, so I'm, I'm a little.
And that was marginally before my time, but I, you know, I think that was more for her services, right, to market the property. But you didn't really have much of a defined, you know, I mean, this is, right, whether you agree with this particular concept or not, I mean, that is. More of a concept than what we had had. Before, right? Other than saying, meet a few houses, you know?
And I think, I think Bruce hit the nail on the head. I mean, he's about to say it's R three. I mean, as long, as long as we're adhering to those requirements, and by the way, I like that layout, Suzie. I, you know, I've always been trying to push young people moving in, that. That looks like a move to bring more people in, and I get what Mayor Garrett's saying.
Other residents, I mean, that's where.
I totally get what you're saying, totally.
Issue with, I would be devastated on the, the, the property behind me if you ended up putting four houses on the property behind me, if that house was total.
And I was actually in that predicament, we're across the street, they want to take this piece of land and put two houses on it, and we, we had to fight it. So I'm getting back to the, the original question, uh, Scott, we do have some leverage, uh, once they respond to the RFP.
You do, and, and that was, you know, uh, you do have some, some degree of control over it. Again, going back to when we solicited RFP from Lori Bell, what we had requested of her was to find, go out and find us some development options, you know. Test the market, who's interested in this property and what are they looking to do with it, and then come back to the city with some options, which we got nothing. I mean, uh.
Right.
It just, it never, so.
Never materialized.
What, what we, what, uh, you know, is included in the packet is, is a concept idea, um, but we don't have any developers interested in putting that in, and, you know. I, and.
But it's a strong suggestion, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an idea.
I wouldn't want to suggest that, yeah.
But it's.
The only way we can remember.
Jill said there was a place that has done that, that's had success, but, um, you know, maybe something like in Royal Oak with those townhomes, but. You know, it, it's a, to me, it's a very different concept and style of housing that, I agree, and it's definitely gonna attract young people, but. How is it gonna sit with the rest of your residents? Um, it's definitely something, uh, that sector of the city doesn't like uh, new development that much, based on what we experienced with Michigan first, so.
And a, and a lot of them have fought through, they fought through, you know, the, the ups and downs of what is happening in, um, the economy, and they stayed for a reason, so. I'm not saying anything is gonna be perfect, but we can't position ourselves to, to be, you know, we just have to really think about those people, so I'm in agreement.
I just, I just, um, I, I would encourage everybody, you know, every council member to think, what do you want your city to look like? I mean, we want to continue to be progressive. We want to attract young people. I have not deviated from this statement for five years.
I do want.
So, so I agree, I agree that.
Act of people that have been here already. I don't.
Right, let me.
Residents, um, leave because they feel as though that they're being encroached on, or their property, or the backyard, or their privacy is being encroached on, so, I mean, I think. What needs to be done is, I mean, as much as we control it, like what, you know, Suzie said, um, it does need to be uh, listed, because this is something that's been going on for at least. Nine years, I know of it being empty.
Yep.
Um, but I think that we just need to be very careful to, um, especially having an aging, um, uh. Aging population and making people feel as though we're, we're, we're pro, um, bringing younger people in on your back of, you know. Just forgetting that, you know, I bought this, I bought my house because of like what Suzie was saying for her, is I want an acreage, I would be, I would. Feel.
And, well, let me just continue my statement. Let me just continue my statement. So, in, in order for those residents around the keyhole to leverage any kind of control. They could have come up with a proposal to say, hey, seven houses will put money into this, the cost to buy this property will divide it equally. And we'll keep, we, we'll, it'll be our backyard, period. That's the only way they could have leveraged control. The second part of that is. Yeah, progress happens, and those houses are, no one's buying large houses anymore. Have you not looked at the market? People are not going out and getting super large houses anymore. I mean, that's a, that's a dinosaur. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to chase anybody out of Lathrow Village. I am just trying to do what's best for Lathrow Village. I have no horse race, uh, horse in the race other than that. That's it.
See, it seems to me, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have two options here. Um, one is, is to list it as R three, and somebody, if somebody buys it, you know, as long as they. Put a, a use on it that's, that's permitted by R three, they're fine. Or alternatively, if, if, if we want to preclude, you know, some sort of development, you know, multi-unit development, then we have to rezone it to. Uh, a, a zone that doesn't allow that. Is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, it's, again, it's. You know, the idea that, or my point when you, by, by saying that you would have some control over it, uh, is, is contingent upon there being multiple offers with, with different ideas for that property, so. Yeah, you could, you could potentially rezone it so that it's just uh, limited to, you know, one house per lot. Uh, that, now, that wouldn't preclude them from coming in and splitting that lot and potentially putting houses there, but I think we've looked at that, and that. Really does, you know, the most you're gonna get off that is four splits, and I don't see how they're, they could even really make that work, but. So, yeah, so I guess it kind of.
Right.
The, I, I, you know, if it was my call, I would, I would just list it for sale and see what you get. Um, if nothing comes in that, you know, you're not obligated to sell the property if you don't like what, you know, what the offers are, so either. You know, someone comes in and lowballs the, the, the price on it, or it's a, you know, Maria Tom, uh, Manario Thompson's, Thompson Tower idea that she wanted there, so. You know, the, but you don't know until you put it out there and see what, um, what's, what someone's willing to do or interested to do with it, because. Um, you know, you might only have one option, and, and that could, you know, that solves your, solves your problem for you, so.
Yeah, but it was, and correct me, you know, um, uh, Don, if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I think it was just a discussion of. What would happen once we listed. It wasn't so much of how to list it. Um, it was just also since it was included in the package. Um, that's, you know, basically just basing my, my opinion in our discussion, our study discussion. Um, so, um, I do believe that it should be listed. I just am concerned about the example that was put in, um, the package, and, and I thought that, you know. We could discuss it, and so we did, and.
Yeah, and, and I'm, you are, you are spot on with me, uh, Kelly, you really are, cause, and to make, to, to make that kind of suggestion, I mean, you're gonna get all kind of folk. No, um, but yes, I, I was hoping as well that we could put some. Or have some say so. And, and making sure that we're, we're protecting both the, 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 our residents that are there, as well as any potential move.
I think Scott.
I think that it should be, um, it should be listed, and then, yes, I agree with, uh, the city attorney, that then we go from there to see who is, um, you know. Look at the office if they come in.
Exactly what I was about to say.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's list it and see what comes in, then we can decide if we are in favor of that, that particular offer or not.
And do we want, I assume we just want to list it at the appraised price, or do we want to list it for more, or just at the appraised price?
Well, let me make a suggestion. So we need to look at how much money we lost so far in that property, such as when we turned on the water, that was a cost. Uh, when we, actually, we cleared a little bit of the property, that was a cost, so if we can go back and look to see if we captured all that.
We, I think we did that. I think it, I think it was about ninety pounds.
Yeah, so if we have, and if we, if you, if it's already ba, I think it'll be baked in. I think we would be good. I mean, you know, if you sell it and they develop on it, you're gonna collect, you know, taxes on it, so we, we'd be fine, so I think we're covered. Any thoughts, Cheryl?
Yes, uh, so I, I guess I need some clarification. I understood that you want the property listed. With no specifications as to how it can be developed at the present time, but what I wasn't clear on was. What was the listing price, if any? Was just asking for responses, or are we asking with the floor?
Well, that's what we were just talking about, you know, what, you know.
We could ask for the floor, right?
No, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the floor, the floor is appropriate. I agree. I mean, based on what the appraisal came back, I think that's within the ballpark.
Yeah, just ask for the appraisal and see what happens. You know, some people may offer less, some people may offer more.
What about, uh, go ahead, Kelly, I'm sorry.
No, I, yeah, cause I thought I heard something different, and you all went.
The floor is two seventeen.
No, that's not saying, that's not.
I'm talking layout.
Yeah, that's not that.
Oh, I, I'm talking about the.
Talking about potential, I'm talking about layout. I definitely think we should go to floor price, but I'm, I'm talking about, uh, a suggested layout.
No, no, we're talking about appraising the property, not, not giving a layout.
Scott says that we can, um, look at what they're proposing, and we can decide from then if we want to accept the, the proposal.
Yes, but we wouldn't put it that in the listing, though, right? I mean, we just listed, we'd list it and then see what the offers are.
Tell me why not? Tell me why not? What would it hurt?
Because then you're, you're gonna limit, who's gonna, you're gonna limit the offers.
Yeah, you would hardly get.
How do you know that? Why?
Well.
Why, tell me why?
I don't, I don't, why is there a downside in just listing it at the appraised price and then seeing what comes in and what ideas they have? I don't see any downside to that.
And let me add to that, Salim. So typically, when you're selling a property, you're not gonna say, hey, oh, by the way, I'm selling this and you need to build that. So there you go. You can't, I mean, it's, it's not feasible.
But that's, that's.
Doesn't make sense.
I didn't say that, though. I said, what are your ideas? You know, for instance, the person across the street did not buy this property because his intention was to. Purchase, make, build two homes, and before he actually bought it, it came to city council. I wasn't on city council, and because council voted it down, and all the neighbors around here screamed. Uh, because they moved. One of the reasons they're there is because it's there, and they screamed, and so the buyer, um, you know, didn't buy it, so. This is new, pardon me?
No, I'm trying to understand your point. Are you talking about somebody across the street from the circle?
I'm, I'm using, I'm using, um, my experience, what happened, I, in the area that's close to me, that a buyer was going to. Purchase some land, and this was before I was on city council, but he was gonna purchase some land, and he wanted to put two houses on this little piece of land. And because the citizens around here fought it, and he could not put two houses on it, they, um, they didn't buy it, so.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying now?
I understand what you're saying.
You're, but that would be a cover. You're had, but that would be covered though, Donna, because if somebody makes an offer and they, and they say that they, they present an offer, we get to talk to them, right? Scott would say, okay, what's your idea at that point? What are you, what are you guys gonna do?
And say, what are your intentions for this property? And, and you know, if they say, oh, I want to build a house there just for me and my family, okay. Uh, you know, my plan is to put a development in here and, and I'm gonna fit twenty-three trailers on this lot. Um, then, okay, not interested in selling it to you. Uh, but I, I don't think, I mean, I, I, I don't think you have to put a limitation on the listing because I think all that's going to do is, is um, you know, you, you might not get anybody that's interested and then now you're right back where you started. So I would leave it as open as possible and again, let people bring ideas to you. You hold the keys of the castle because you own the property right now. So you get to decide ultimately if you, if you want to enter into that, that sales transaction or if you don't. So, um, you know, yes, you could put conditions on it, uh what you're looking for and limit uh purchase offers that would meet those conditions, but I don't see that as being uh the best, the best maneuver at this point.
I agree. I mean, we've been very progressive up until this point and we haven't had really many hits on that thing, even with the price that we thought it was gonna go for. So to put something else on top, I, I agree with Scott. We, we gotta know what it is and, and.
Honestly, even with this, go ahead, Kelly. I bet you're about to say what I'm gonna say. Go ahead.
It wasn't listed to have any hits yet, so.
Right.
No, what I'm saying is the offer that came in, the offer that came in at forty-five thousand, we didn't have any other offer until that one. And it was out there for well over a year and a half, two years. So that's what I'm saying. Now we're gonna.
And that, that's just evidence. And that's, that's exactly what we did. We, we're just saying, let's do exactly what we did. I mean, we had an offer for forty-five thousand dollars. We said, what do you want to do? They said they want to put a house on it. We said, all right, well, let's think about it and.
Yeah.
Excuse, excuse me, as, as I was saying from the beginning, yes, we should go ahead and list it. And because it's a study session discussion, that's why we're able just to discuss where we all are at instead of just saying, just go ahead and, and do whatever. So, um, I, I think, yes, it should be, uh, I think that it should be listed. And the question that was on the table was basically, could we have any type of say around what could be there? The answer was, that's probably not a good idea for listings and then we could make a decision if in fact we get some type of hits on that, which I'm in, in agreeance with. But again, going back to the fact, it's just a discussion of what could happen if someone did come and give an example or want to build, like what the example was in our package or anything differently. You know, that was, that was just it. The bottom line, I guess, because we want to cut things real close and ever cut things short is yes, we need to go ahead and list the property. So uh now my question is, who is listing the property? Is it for sale by owner or are you going out to, or are we going out to a real estate agent?
That question for Cheryl?
Either. No, because Cheryl will not and I'm, and, and I have to put, push her back. That's Cheryl, Cheryl, this is not in real estate whatsoever. To put on her plate. So I mean, that's why I'm asking who, who would be, how we're gonna do that?
Well, I, I think we talked about that a little bit before, if I remember right, and I thought, I guess my opinion was at the time and I thought others agreed that let's use a professional. I mean, we're not real estate sellers. I mean, we, I think.
So we're back at the beginning of where we were before. That's, I was totally letting you all bring us right back to where we were from the beginning. We have the appraisal and so this is what we've already done before. Now we have the appraisal, so we go backwards. So does this go back to Lori Bell saying that she did and she was the only person that submitted something? So this is, I'm asking.
Yeah, um, I think we should go back to Lori Bell and uh let her list it at the appraised price.
Well, I think you should.
Scott, what's your advice?
I think you should open, I think you could solicit an RFP for a new Realtor's event because that, that RFP, the timeframe on that has long since expired. So uh just in the interest of being fair to anyone else.
Hey, Scott, I didn't hear the first part of your answer.
Yeah, I, I think there's some, somebody's at the, Salim's house is loud. I can, I can relate. Um, I was just saying that I think, I think it's appropriate at this point to uh solicit a new RFP for Realtors, just given the amount of time that's passed since the one that Lori Bell submitted on.
Okay.
So do I. I definitely agree.
Okay, so um, there is your, can you take yourself off mute, Cheryl? If you were talking, you're gritting your teeth, I'm not sure, but. Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
I can hear you now.
Um, we did list it again for an RFP for Realtors and did not receive any responses, but I can do it a third time.
With this new appraisal?
Not with the appraisal price in it, but we did ask for an RFP for Realtor, for the property.
I think that you should um do an RFP for a, a third time now that we know exactly what the appraisal is. I'm sure that um, you might get some more takers on it maybe. Um, maybe not have it out as long. I don't know. How long did you have the uh RFP open to?
It wasn't a long period of time, but it was listed. One other um thought for you to consider is the planning commission is going through the master planning process relative to the development of this property. And it might be problematic to be soliciting proposals that are consistent with the master plan if you're going to reject it. So you may want to have your preferences for the property reflected in the master plan.
I concur with that statement.
So. So we just. Yeah, we just rejected everything Scott said.
We can convey to uh Jill that maybe identifying a different redevelopment ready parcel would be, would be best.
Or, or, I mean, is it a matter of, I mean, part of the, I suppose, part of the appeal of um of, of choosing this site as a priority site is, it is under the city's control. So you do have some say in what can happen there as opposed to, you know, even though it's priority redevelopment site, the school, right? You have no control of the school. We don't control it. So, um, you know, if there's is there a way to, is there anything about this that, what was presented that you like? And if so, is there, you know, I mean, we could, then let's see if we can work around that or somehow incorporate something else or we can ask Jill to maybe come up with a proposal that, or a concept that would just have three to four houses. I mean, just ideas there.
Long as it doesn't go with that ten.
Uh, well.
How many houses?
I, I think the layout is, I think the layout is appropriate. I mean, it, it's not, I don't think it's crowded and I think it's, it's inviting and it's a development that's probably needed in the city.
I totally disagree with that, but that's my opinion because now you are suggesting, you, you said that we should not put any parameters around it, but now you're giving us a, a suggestion that, and so.
No, I, she asked us what our opinion was.
I, I, the, the idea is that if we have something in the comprehensive plan, like it should be something, it can be a concept. I mean, and that's, that's um, that's the idea. But, and it doesn't have to be set in stone, but it would, it would be something that you would like to see there. So if there's something that, a, and then that gives anybody interested in purchasing the property, whether it is a single individual that wants to but, put one to two houses or a developer that gives them some sort of idea of what the city is interested in seeing there and, and what they would support. So that kind, and, and it, and because it's in the master plan, it gives you a little bit more backing to say, see, this is something, we, we already, we already discussed this, this is something that we support. So, um, that's why I'm asking, like, if there's, if there's any part of this that you would like to see, I mean, obviously Ian likes it. A little lukewarm from everybody else, but um, you know, if there's elements that you'd like, that you'd like as part of this design, you'd like to see.
Yes.
Incorporated or not, or I mean, like Scott said, I guess you guys can scrap it, but I mean, it's, um.
Let me expand on my thought. So, um, for sure, I don't think we should go the route of the Bigfoot house because it's, it's not economically feasible for generations that come after us. So if you're fifty and older, it's a generation that comes after us on the line, except for Suzie and probably Scott. Uh, number two, the, the park section, gazebo section, I think is acceptable. So that design element that's there, I think it's the circle, center circle part that you have there, right? That, that's acceptable. So if we can at least, you know, have common ground, whether or not that should stay or go, then decide what size houses should go in the, in the keyhole. But I don't think we should go the route of the Bigfoot house because no one's buying those now. Seriously.
Well, here's just an idea and like I, I think I know the answer's gonna be, but what if it was, what if it looked like a big house, a Bigfoot home? But was several smaller units?
Hey, that sounds like my idea.
Opinion in anyway.
That sounds like my idea.
Several, what's several?
Well, I mean, it could be, it could still be. Are, those houses are huge over there. I mean, they're like at least twenty-three hundred square feet. I mean, that's, you know.
But what's several to you?
I mean, you could probably get.
This is the only reason that I'm skeptical about just putting an RFP out there because um, uh, it's all relative. I mean, you said several. We went from saying not, not having several. Now what is several to you?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, you could put like, you, you could build a Bigfoot, Bigfoot home and break it into, you know, four apartments if you wanted to. I mean, it's.
Like townhomes.
Like townhomes.
Townhomes.
Yeah, like a townhome or something. I mean, you know, a, attached townhomes, but I, I'm just throwing it out there as.
Yeah, like, yeah, let, let me, let me, let me just say this too. I am one hundred percent about getting um, younger people into the city. I also was also part of what I ran on, that our schools are uh coming down because of that. But it's so, so the, the thing is, how do you compromise? Where we can attract um the younger generation as well as keep those who have been, who have been faithful to our city content enough. So that's all I'm saying. So when you say something like several houses, I'm, I, I'm weary now. I want to know what exactly you mean by several houses.
Wait, before, before Suzie. Before Suzie, Suzie, before you answer that, I just want to say that those designs that, that you've come up with and you know, if you're saying a Bigfoot house divided in several units, that's exactly what I had recommended a year and a half ago.
Okay.
And I, it got all poo-pooed on. So I'll let you finish. Go ahead.
Okay, so. No, I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm just trying to help. Like if the optic, if I'm, I'm thinking of the optics of it, right? Of what the concept of having, you know, having that many houses, right? Uh, in the concept that was provided, right? There's ten units there. So is it, um, you know, if the, if, if the problem seems to be um, the scale, the visual scale and the visual density, does it help make, does it help make it more palatable if the, if the, you know, if they're more, if they're, the units are built to be more like, you know, attached, attached townhomes, right? So there's maybe three attached townhomes that have a combined total of six units, but it just looks like three good sized houses. Does that make, does that make a difference in whether you like the concept or not?
So can I, I'll just say, uh, I think the issue is not the visual thing.
Okay.
That Suzie, I think, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly and Donna, but I think your point is, is gonna be too much traffic with this or too much activity maybe with all these houses there. And, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but I mean, so if ten houses is too many, I, I like the concept. I like the way it looks, but can we do it with fewer houses, like we were saying, like the five houses? And I don't think that would be, I mean, to me, I don't think that would disrupt the, the existing owners nearly as much. I don't think there'd be as much traffic. I don't think there would maybe be as much activity. It would be, you know, nice, smaller scale homes and not one big giant house. I mean, I like that idea.
Yeah, that's a compromise. Or another compromise is, um, okay, make one big, Bigfoot-like house. The, the, the same design as the house in the woods and then divide it, as you're saying, Suzie, into different townhomes. So then you have a historical site, then you can put a, a, you know, a plaque up here. This is kind of like where that, that mansion used to be, but then you have that division. That's another compromise, but I'm flexible either way. I just don't want a big house one or two in that lot. It's just, it's not feasible.
And I think, just so everyone's clear, we're talking about two different things here. I think you let the market dictate your, you open it up for sales to whatever. And then what Suzie's talking about is in the master plan. Personally, I, I think you take, I, I don't think you put this parcel in the master plan. I think it's just gonna lead, lead to confusion. Uh, and you, you, you obviously have the, have seen the concept. You've seen the, what it looks like on paper for ten and, and sounds like based on the discussion that that's too many, but maybe you would consider less. So if the market dictates that this is the type of development someone's willing to put in here, then, then you at least have that information to fall back on. But, but I think putting it in the master plan is gonna send, you're right, I think it's gonna send a mixed message because why are we asking for all concepts when our master plan is identifying that we want higher density homes here? So I understand what Jill was trying to do with it and, and you know, I think it's a creative use for the space, but I, I don't, I think it's sending a mixed message and I think ultimately council should let the market dictate what, what is going to go there just so that they can do something with this property. Like Kelly said, it's been nine years and, and we're still sitting with it in our hands and incurring expenses year after year.
You're right. There were, that was two different conversations, so, huh, okay.
So, but we need to have some um direction to uh give to city, the city manager. I go, I know, I know, I know, to go list it. But is there any, anything else around her listing it or, or having it listed? And who's listening it? Or we know she's.
Just the RFP, just the RFP on the uh, on the appraisal price.
You're going to put the RFP out for um a uh, a Realtor? For how long did you do the last one?
I have, about for two weeks.
Hey, for the same thing, um. We'll go from there, I guess.
God, if we um, if we put out an RFP for a Realtor and, uh Realtor and, and we don't get uh any responses again, or, or do we have the ability to then just pick somebody? Because we did pu- put out an open RFP and nobody responded.
Yeah, I think at that point, no, you've had multiple RFPs, you've had no response. So it's uh within the city's ability to go out and, and hire a Realtor of their choosing.
Okay, so then we know within, in about two weeks or so, we should be able to get this thing listed regardless.
Yeah.
Does that give you some direction?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have police department expansion study.
Yes, um, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we had the presentation in regards to the possible um uses and um reuse of the down, the lower level of city hall. And the one that made the most practical sense was to repurpose it for the use by the police department because they have the most pressing needs relative to training and um security issues relative to a number of their activities. And what you have in your packet is a proposal to do the initial assessment of that um area design by Redstone Architects. We did ask a few, um, for a few proposals and they were the only ones that responded. And their price was about seventy-five hundred. So I didn't want to bring that to you unless this was definitely a direction you wanted to pursue because once they come back with their recommendations for the design, then we have to figure out the funding for, for that, we, of that space.
Wasn't it, wasn't it around seventeen thousand?
Yeah, I was gonna say it was like so. Yeah, I was gonna say it was like seventeen thousand. It was a fixed fee from nine, ninety, ninety six four oh. And a fee of seventy five hundred for observational. Building condition, so.
So yeah, so either of those approaches are. More than just a little bit of money, so. But it didn't make sense to pursue it at all if this was not something you were intent on following up with.
Yeah, I guess the 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 question is, I mean, that was, that was kind of my question as well, Cheryl. I mean, if we're gonna spend seventeen thousand, we need to know that. Whatever they come back with, there's a good chance that we would actually implement and. You know, I I I, you know, I'm I'm not a. Contractor, but I got to imagine that with the amount. Amount of work that we would need to be doing, we're talking a very significant expense. You know, which which would either require us to. Find a way to pay for it within the city or to do something like a public safety mileage to to pay for that. And just based on conversations and and. Uh, you know, some of the things I've seen in social media, I I don't know how that would go. So I I just want to make sure that if we spend the seventy dollars, we have a, you know, a a good probability of being able to move forward with it eventually. You know, I know they're out of space, so we need to do something, but.
Right. And I did talk with the um. USDA rule development because they have some grants and loans for facility improvements and in particular for um, police and public safety. We don't qualify for the grants. Um, because our um, average um, adjusted income for our community is too high, but we do qualify for the low interest loans. Which are around two, two point something percent. So that's one um, financing option that's available. And there's others, as you mentioned, including, you know, bonds or. Or mileage, but I would anticipate that it's probably a, a low six figure. Project altogether without. Making any um, determinations. But I did not want to take this initial step if that was not what we were planning to do in the bigger picture.
Yeah, I know when with the infrastructure committee, you know, one of the proposals that we had uh, talked about was actually using a. You know, public safety mileage and and, you know, we didn't, you know, to help fund, you know, to to take. What we're basically do the shell game to get, get it to free up uh, you know, mills that we could use for for the roads. And one of the reasons why we, you know, there were several reasons why we didn't uh, go with that option, but one of them was again, that we were worried that it might, that portion might not pass.
Cheryl, maybe I'm forgetting or misplaced that, but what, is there, there is a report or request stating why we need this? Extra space for the police department?
Yes, I don't know if you remember when um, Chris and Cory made the presentation, then they were soliciting. Um, input relative to possible uses and reuses of that lower level space. Some of it was like a a community meeting space and various other things. And after talking with residents and staff and especially the police department, their needs for additional space was the one that was most pressing.
Do we know if the um, the two dollar figures that they put in their proposal, are those? Simultaneous portions of the project or or is, you know, so in other words, you know, could we do the? You know, the the fixed fee ninety six hundred dollars for for programming and conceptual design? To get more information before moving on to the observational portion where they actually bring in the. You know, the 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 engineers. Um, you know, or or do we know if we have to do both for them to come up with a? Um, you know, with 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 some guidance that would would help us.
I don't know if the chief is on the call. I would have to go back and ask that particular question if it could be broken up into segments. Or if it's all inclusive.
Yeah, because it seemed, it seemed to me again that that they might be able to provide us, like the first, well, that's what it says. It says the first phase is is. Conceptual and then, you know. Typically, you want to come up with a concept first and then, you know, flush it out further, you know, to get. Um, you know, more, more of a deep sense. So it might be something that we can just do the first phase and just get an idea.
Can I say something? Hey, this is the chief. Um, you know, I don't have that document in front of me, but when I spoke with uh, the architect, one of the main questions he had. Was had we, you know, in a, in a recent past, have we had an environmental study? Uh, done on the building. And that was one of his big concerns was to find out if there was asbestos and. And other hazardous things that they're gonna have to deal with. So that was one of the first. Uh, things that he wanted to do. And again, I I apologize, I don't, do not have that uh, report sitting here in front of me. Um, you know, we s- we did talk about concepts and and different um, things that we need. Um, especially locker room and restroom facilities, uh, processing. Uh, facilities that are separate from our our day to day desks because what we're ended up using right now is. You know, we're writing a report on a desk, reading at the same desk, and then we're processing property. Uh, or evidence on the same desk. And it's, there's, there's a number of issues that go along with that. So. Um, the space for the police department is is greatly needed as well as additional security features that uh, unfortunately, we don't have at this time. So I I don't know, I I understand that there's two different uh, dollar figures in front of you. Um, but I do know that one of the things he was suggesting is that we do an environmental study of the building and that would. That would go for any type of improved improvements that we we do at City Hall, so.
Hey Bruce, can you mute yourself?
Yeah, thank you. That's what I've been telling the other person in the room to do is mute herself.
So, in, I'm trying to find this in in the um. I'm sorry, and I'm looking at it on a different. You know, look at what was said, um. Regardless of who or where we go with that, I figure you have, you have to do a environmental. Something that we can get more information on, so that we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we can get.
We can get that and bring it back to your next study session.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Thanks, Steve. Next up is going to be the staff reorganization.
I wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. Um, one, um, we had a conversation with the DDA. Relative to some sharing of costs. And one of the things that there is an initial agreement on is um, sharing of the costs. For the code inspector position so that we can make that a full-time position. Um, I have reached out to a former employee, so. So they um, they seemed receptive, um. But. But.
Our conversation.
But one of the thoughts, as we're, as we're looking at that, there's a couple of things going on and that some of the um, positions that we have are taking on additional responsibilities. So I'd like to look at some restructuring, just in terms of their roles and responsibilities, which also would mean their compensation. Um, so I'd rather look at it as, as a package as opposed to just that singular, but I just wanted to um, bring you into. My thoughts relative to that. And one of them included um, possibly looking at. Um, one of the positions and possibly even the code inspector, assuming some of the roles of an assistant um, city manager. So. Because there's a number of projects that are going on right now, which. We need someone to just really be the point person. There's a lot of infrastructure projects that are happening. And we really need somebody um, to be the point person for addressing all of those.
Yeah, I had that on my list too, to 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 bring up tonight, today as well, because, you know, my concern is, is the uh. Not the reorganization, but you know, giving, getting you help because, you know, we've got, you know, we've got the sidewalk program coming up, which is gonna require. Um, a lot of uh, special assessment, district creation work, which is all gonna fall on you, not all, but a large portion of that is gonna fall on you. And then on top of that, we've got the um, you know, the 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 roads and the ditches. And again, there's gonna be special assessments associated with that. Which is also gonna fall on you and and that, that. You know, that could get a little complex for, you know, with the special assessments that we need to create for for the roadwork. And so. The issue is, is, you know, how do we get this done without any of it falling through the cracks? Cause we're on, you know, we're we're time pressured for both of those. Um, you know, but with all the other stuff that you have have going on as well.
So this is gonna be kind of a um, a, this conversation about the staff reorganization. Getting assistant city manager and what Cheryl sent out today was um. Because I requested her to just send it out to everybody to show exactly um, what's on her plate. Um, I think that. One, to talk about this, yes, she's gonna need some help. And I think we also need to be conscious of putting extra things on her plate that has not gone through city council as a priority. So put a thumb tack in that one to know that we're gonna come back around to that, for that to be like a discussion item G. But for the staff reorganization, um, it was first brought up on what the request, and just to be totally transparent. Uh, the quest was from the former employee um, to come back in. For me, the answer was we need to put out a uh, RFP. Or, you know, a job posting because their request was a little bit more than what we were um. Willing to to pay plus it was out of the range. It would put other people that's already in position. It was, it was just, it was. Kind of, so, um, then the next thing was the fact is that, yes, Cheryl needs to have an assistant. Um, city manager and start uh, kind of delegating some of this uh, the. Things that are coming up, the things that are priority that she needs to be focused on. And have both, you know, the former employer, employee in taking on the role of the city manager. I mean, excuse me, I did not mean that at all, assistant city manager.
Yeah, just uh.
No, we already, yeah, so no.
No, we we don't, we get it. Um, are we allowed to ask who the former employee is?
We can ask whatever, you know.
Who is the former employee?
Can't tell you that, Mr. Kinsel. Our former, our former code inspector, um.
Okay, I appreciate it. So as long as you don't go way back to other former employees. But let me, let me um, let me add to it. So, so we had originally, I think several months ago, we had talked about. Um, trying to get Cheryl a a an assistant and we had tabled it and we said we were gonna come back to it. So now that we back to, we're back to it. Which is kind of fast-tracking it. I say let's try to fast-track it, just like we did uh. You know, the radar uh, speed limit signs because I think it's really important because once Bruce has his meeting. There's, I'm pretty sure that that organization, that team is already gonna kind of, you know, gel it together and. When we come back and ta- start talking about infrastructure is gonna be off and running. So I say we fast-track the. The assistant city manager to, you know, kind of right-size that. And if we need to discuss further, um, you know, um. Staff pri- pay, pay structure, I think we need to discuss that pretty quickly and make that final as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Cause that's really important. I, yeah, I saw that list and I'm like, yeah, okay, I get it. I'm willing to take off the uh, the um. Market study because that's low on the priority list, but the other one that I.
About that also, so put a pin in that one also. So all of that is gonna be coming up momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had to say on that topic.
Okay.
So, um, the, the, the two things is that, one, just to follow up in in um. Just remember that um. Everything has to go through Cheryl regarding any, anything that goes to a staff person. Anything, um, because what it causes is confusion to the staff. If a councilperson approaches a staff member and asks them to do something. It, and and I'm not saying that, you know, don't get me wrong, the staff, very smart, very intelligent people. But when you feel as though when an authority asking you for something, you might put to, put to the side. What is a priority to finish something for someone who's an authority, what they're asking for is not a priority. Does that make sense? What I'm, what I'm saying. So I am only asking and and I'm also doing on behalf of uh, our city administrator. That everything that you ask for or what you need for um, from a staff member needs to be sent. To our city administrator first. That is also within our charter that we are supposed to go through the city administrator. That's not me. That's our charter. That's already in place. And so with that said, um, I have not had emails. I think it might have been Tuesday night. But Tuesday night's a kind of a blur for me right now. So um, I I don't know when my emails actually went down. Um, but I finally got all my emails and I, and I, I read through those. So first up is about the water study. Um, the water study we discussed in our last meeting. And it was uh, sir, the summary of that from our city administrator is that they've done. The city has done everything that they possibly could do. And the next thing is probably going to be where we need to upgrade our. Uh, water meters. Am I correct in that? Okay. So that means that we need to figure out the, or have that added to our capital improvements plan. Because that's gonna take money to, you know, upgrade the other water meters. So.
Is this the water loss issue you're talking about, Kelly?
Yeah. So, um, in doing the discussion with uh, the the city manager. The fact is that, and I'm I'm confident unless you all are second guessing what our city manager already has done. Is that she's done the investigation, figured out, you know, what it's not, and it's come down to where our water meters are the ones that need to be upgraded. Um, there's not a need to put a committee together or a um, another investigation. It's about us getting together and doing the capital improvement. Talking about the capital improvement to get our our water meters um, upgraded.
So just so, just so we're, I I'm clear because I sent the email and I've been uh, chewing on uh. Councilman Siddiqui's ear about it and um, that's how the email came up. Just so I'm clear because I, I didn't hear this update before. So we did at least do a preliminary investigation and what came back. So we're saying forty percent. That is lost is probably due to infrastructure issues, not anything else. That's, that's what I just heard you say, basically.
Yeah, cause at the last, at the last meeting, we had talked about, you know, verifying the the meters that. You know, uh, SAKA is is basing their charges on and. Have we done that?
Yeah, that's, that was my next step. Did we do that? Did we verify that meters were working and did we? Is that a part of that loss? Cause I don't know exactly where. Oh, man, did we lose her? Oh, man. I ran her away.
And somehow, okay.
Okay, sorry about that, Cheryl.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last.
Yeah, so so the comment, the comment that I made was, was um. You know, at at the last meeting that we had, we had talked about checking into things like the 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 meters that uh. Uh, SAKA uses to, you know, basically bill us and are those accurate? Are there problems with those meters? I I think we had talked at the last meeting. At some point, there were problems with them in the past and and they were corrected, but you know, are we having issues? So. You know, have we looked into that and some of, some other things be- before we we get to the meters or?
SAKA has um, evaluated their portions of the systems and where they connect and they did not find any um, discrepancies. Um, if you remember where we had the um. Um, if you remember where we had the um, um, I forgot those weeds, the um, Frank Mities.
Yeah, right.
The system that was corrected, there was a leak found at the sanitary retention tank that was corrected. We had Monday investigate the entire system to look to see if there was perhaps, perhaps a water main um, issue that we weren't aware of, and they fixed the ones they found. So I don't know where else to look uh, relative to the amount of loss that we're experiencing. And I think Pam's still on the line, but uh, the.
I am.
Uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, I think, or some extended.
The last time the city has put meters in any houses is then nineteen ninety-five. So meters slow down, they do not go fast, they slow down. Our meters are slowing down, that is a big part of water loss. It has to be, because if you haven't had meters put in, I've been there twenty years and no meters have been put in the houses, except for if we have a bad meter, we have to put a new one in. But beyond that, so that is a big project that we need to undertake. And I know they talked about this when Matt was here about going, I think he came to council with about um, about putting new meters in houses and things like that too.
So Pam, is this, is this something that the, the replacement of meters? Is this something that we would, we would fund through um, you know, the, the, the capital improvement portion of the water rate? Or is this something that would be, the expense of this would be something that we would have to go outside, you know, for like a, a, a capital bond or?
You're going to have to figure out what the cost is. Last time they bonded for them in nineteen ninety-five, they bonded for them.
Okay, um, is this something that, that we should be doing in the infrastructure committee Cheryl? Or, or working with you on, or is it something that you should be doing by yourself or?
Um, the infrastructure can, as part of the conversation, we're planning on hand, having with the bond attorney. Because I mentioned to him that with all the lead and copper and now the water meters, there's some substantial project costs that we're looking at. Um, they would eventually, even if it's the um, the bond servicing will be paid for through the, the water um, fund. So the fees associated with the water accounts. But do you pay for the big project upfront? That's what we need to be looking at.
Right, and I, and I was planning on tomorrow when we meet, talking to you a little bit about that. Cause you know, obviously, I emailed you separately about the, the email that you had sent me that I never responded to, so.
Pam, when you say the wat- the, the meters are old and they start to slow down, so what, what does that mean? How does, how does that impact the water loss? Does that mean it's not recording the right readings?
Correct, water is going through the meter and um, the rate, or the reads are not correctly being read, because the meter is slowing down and the water is still going through faster than what the meter is telling us.
So we're giving out more water than what we're charging our residents?
That's, yep, that's what happens when meters go bad, they start slowing down.
See, that's interesting though, because I know some people are saying their water rates have gone up quite a bit and they don't know why.
The water rates have gone up because of um, the budget. Every year in July, they go up, when we do our budget. Because we have to have the, for the infrastructure cost and things like that. So we're trying to do the, the water and sewer budget rate. So they will go up for that. Now use of water, I mean, people have been using water, but these older homes, a lot of people are not checking for leaks as we try to, we try to tell people do the dye test, put, you know, dye in your toilets, things like that. Because I mean, there can be silent leaks in houses that people don't know about.
And what's often overlooked with residents is that they're home more now. You know, many people are working from home and they don't realize the impact that has on their water use.
And you don't know how many times we hear, I've never changed my water. I do the same thing every day, every month, and my, I never change anything in my water use. We hear that all the time.
Yeah, here, here's my concern. That's one of the reasons why I, I wanted to, to get addressed, right? So um, I understand that you guys probably looked at the SAKWA meters. Um, and over the last several years, we've had water main breaks. Now usually in, in, in a system that's, that's pushing water through, a system that pushes water. When you lose water, meaning a water main break and it gets fixed, you see that anomaly in, in the recording, right? But when I looked at the Plant Moran data, it didn't show that. It showed that it's been consistent for the last three years. So my question is, and Saleem had challenged me on this, can we go back a couple of years, even before the Michigan first development? See where that is and then look after the Michigan first development? To see if, is there a draw on that property, whether or not we're, we're actually tallying that, that water there? If we can do that through Plant Moran, that's easy data we could, we could pull up.
I don't know if we can do it through Plant Moran. Um, I know um, like Jeff Mueller, when he was here, he had spreadsheets he used to keep all that data loss on and that. And we do not have those spreadsheets anymore. Because when he left, his um, computer was changed over and some of his documents are not, you know, we tried to save everybody's information and some of his information was not saved, because we were looking for that.
Can't go through Plant Moran, because they have it as a, as a, a data point, they're using that as a data point. Why can't we go through them?
Well, we can try to see.
They, we can see how far back they go in terms of um, looking at the water loss and.
Right, I mean, I mean, you could just go back six years, you don't have to go back ten or whatever.
I should be able to go and audit reports and see.
Yeah, cause what I saw, what she, what they presented uh, last month is that every year for the last three years, it's been a consistent number. And if you have water main leaks, and if you have a water main break, that number should not be consistent. You should have, you should have a spike in the system. So that's why I'm like really concerned. I mean, that forty percent has been thirty-nine point nine or whatever that number is. It has really been close to that number consistently for three years.
Yeah, and it's been longer, I don't know if it's been that high, but it's been longer than that, cause I know the budgets that I've read. You know, when I first got here and, and for the budget the year before, so that's now spans five years, all indicated, you know, that there, that the water loss had been a, a big issue. I don't know if it was quite as large, you know, four or five years ago, but it was definitely large enough that it, it made the radar.
Right, right, and I'm just trying to find, you know, I'm pointing at something that we can actually just call them and get the data, so we don't have to do too much busy work. The other part of that is, okay, so we get, the city is sending out water bills to residents and then they get those back. And I said this in my email, what about those empty houses? I mean, do we have someone that can verify that water is actually shut off? You're not losing water at those residents that aren't occupied? And then we can say, okay, yeah, we are losing water there, that may be an issue. Have we done that kind of investigation yet?
We're doing that currently on a couple of properties, including commercial properties. And if you recall, there is a um, a hold by the state relative to shutting off water, I think through the end of the year. We do have some that are um, have unpaid water bills for an extended period of time. And some of them are even about to go into foreclosure. So as soon as we get information as to, especially if they're not occupied, we do, we are planning on cutting off those water um, connections at least.
Okay, I mean, my last observation also, um, is there a way we can kind of keep it on the agenda to just get an update? To see where we are, you know, what have we done, you know? Maybe a handful of bullet points, hey, we've checked this and there's no issue. Cause I mean, it is, it is a big issue right now, if that's possible, Mayor.
You're on mute, Kelly.
Um, it is on Cheryl, if, if I'm not mistaken, it is on her list. Priorities.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, already on her list of priorities.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We were kind of just following up to your email of asking for a, was it, um, is this the committee?
No, no, not a committee. I actually didn't request a committee, I just said, let's just have an update monthly for the, for the water. Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I request.
It's on Cheryl's um, list. I think that um, when Cheryl sends out her manager's report, that that's what she can, you know, you can do an update on the manager's report that she sent out.
Okay, and, and I was serious about helping in any way. I mean, if you want to leverage me, I'll go through Cheryl. I mean, if you want me to, you know, assist in any way, I'm, I'm willing to do that.
Suit up.
Suit up.
Right, you know.
Yeah, all right, no problem.
Um, the next email that uh, we received was regarding the um, contracts regarding um, later services and um.
Plant Moran.
Yeah, um, Cheryl, you want to go ahead, cause that's on your list already also.
Right, and if you recall, I said I'd come back in November with the um, RFP for the auditing services. So I was already working on that. And one bit of information I need feedback from you on is the evaluation process of the responses that we've received. Did you just want that handled administratively? Did you want one or two council people to be on the evaluation team? Or how did you want to approach that?
Um, I think, you know, we, we can leverage our council expertise, cause we got one accountant on council and the other one is a statistician, so. But I'm willing to do it also.
Our thing about putting committees together is um, one, you have the time. And are you volunteering them or are they?
I'm not volunteering anyone, I'm just making a suggestion. I'd be happy to help with that Cheryl, I mean, with the evaluation process. I mean, I think I can provide some insight on that, so.
Um, Cheryl, there, I think everything has been addressed, right?
Uh, we didn't talk about the DPS services.
All right, yes, I'm sorry, later building services, go ahead.
In case you didn't get a chance to see the email that I sent, um, they're already in a state of high transition. And um, one, Tim is getting ready to retire. But more importantly, they've taken on a lot of new responsibilities in regards to reporting and um, evaluations of the systems, especially in regards to the illicit discharge. If we recall, we had some, some um, some ticks against us from the um, Eagle, former DEQ.
Yep.
They, they have to be accountable for some of the um, details associated to, with the reporting. In order to accomplish that, they needed internet and a computer. So today Comcast was out there installing the internet and Wednesday a computer is to be delivered and installed, so that they can assume some of those additional responsibilities. We've been working with um, HRC relative to making certain that they're properly trained to do these reports. So in terms of timing, this just isn't the best time to try to look at what a contract would be, because we're, their responsibilities are growing each and every day right now. So, you know, earlier next year, perhaps we can take a look at it. And also we can see what are they going to do relative to um, the replacement of Tim and their own restructuring and if it's still a good fit, or do we need to be looking at some other options?
Yep, I understand that. And you know, full disclaimer, uh, disclosure. So, you know, I just selected the two companies that we've been talking about for the last year and a half. I mean, my goal is not to replace anybody, we just want to see what the, what the market is bearing. I mean, we've never had this, you know, we've never said, okay, let's go see, let's go do a market study and see what's going on. I mean, we could pick any contract. I'm just saying, I just picked those as an example, so, yeah, my goal is not to do that.
And I think we've done some informal investigations since I've been here, looking at what other communities are doing and what they're paying. So I don't see how, the likelihood of us getting one company that's going to do all of the services that they provide is pretty remote.
Yep, I agree with that.
Timing is right, right now for trying to initiate that.
Thank you, um, Cheryl, I appreciate that.
And I received a text message, um, Councilmember Stallings had to sign off, so just so you know.
Yeah, we just lost her.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um. Next, Mayor and Council um, comments in, over my comments. It's just to reiterate, um, it's per our charter that um, everything is kind of uh, not kind of, everything is uh, sent through Dr. Mitchell when it comes to um, staff requests. Yeah, it, it goes to Dr. Mitchell for staff request. And that we as a whole will evaluate suggestions or you know, if you have an idea of what we need to do, it needs to present it to um, uh, Council and for us to discuss. Um, anyone have any other comment?
Um, yeah, I have one comment and unfortunately I have to go back to the House in the Woods property, because um, you know, like Scott said, there are two, two issues we have to worry about, right? So we, we're trying to, you know, get this RFP out and at the same time give Suzie some direction, because she's going to be, they're going to be having that planning commission meeting. So I think, and I'm not speaking for Suzie, but you know, based on what we've been talking about, we're just trying to get some feedback on, you know, what kind of direction you can go with the planning commission. Cause obviously they're trying to do that, the, you know, finalize some documentation on, on um, uh, now I can't remember what it's called. That, yes, thank you. So um, are we tabling that? Or we're going to wait till, wait till the planning commission has, have their meeting before we kind of discuss in between the RFP and deciding whether or not we're going to put that back on, on, you know, the planning commission, commissions plate?
I, I will say just to that, I mean, obviously we're going to bring back, I mean, they have, the planning commission has a, a working draft, right? Um, which they haven't really discussed, right? Other than to say, hey, look at your working, working draft, kind of go through it and um, start collecting some thoughts and comments that you, that you have on it. Um, yeah, so that, and, and so there's still going to be, you know, as much as I would love to have the comprehensive plan out for comment neighboring, our neighboring community. I mean, it's realistically not going to happen until probably January.
January.
Fair, January, February. So the planning commission will, I mean, they'll certainly get the, will relate to them the feedback um, that you all have given earlier tonight on um, on the House in the Woods concept. But, I mean, yes, obviously if you, if you've got comments or, you know, let me have them and we'll, we'll work through it, um. I don't.
So Scott's comment earlier, I think, was just leave it out for now, right? Not, not, it's got, not comment on that, the master plan, is that something that's okay with you Suzie to do?
I, I mean, that's fine with me, I, that's ultimately, I mean, that'll be up to the planning commission to take that out. I mean, which is why we're going to share with them your comments and let them make that decision. Cause ultimately, it's their document that they, you know, and they make their recommendation for you to, to ultimately adopt it. So um, I mean, just in terms of process, that, that'll be what happens, but we'll certainly let them know.
So do you want to, you want us to officially occur to say, okay, Councilman Ferguson said this and this is what he was looking for? Councilman Siddiqui said that, Mayor, Mayor Garrett said this. Is that what you're, that's what you're going to present to the planning commission? You're going to say, okay.
I don't think I'll be so formal as to call you out for each of your individual comments on it. But I, I mean, we'll, you know, very broadly let them know that, you know, I mean, it was, you know, the, the thoughts and feelings. Some love for certain elements and, and not for others. And you'll let them kind of take that and make their decision that way. And ultimately, I mean, if, if, for example, they, they chose to um, you know, they chose to keep it in there, but you know, when it gets to you, you can, I mean, you can take it out then too. So I mean, there's, there's avenues. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Uh, one last observation, so the butterfly garden, the little triangle that's in, on the other side of that road, that's supposed to be a part of that whole parcel, right?
No.
Well, technically.
That's, um, no, that's part of the right away actually, because that like kind of splits the road. Um, so nope, that's not part of that parcel.
Okay, I thought that was a part of the parcel. Okay, I thought that was a part of the parcel, wasn't it? Okay, I, I'm just double checking, because I think the, when we first said, okay, we're going to send that out, I think I asked that question.
No, that's always been city control, and I think where you're getting misled is that uh we gave the Friends of the Preserve the right to.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Gave them control that.
Got it. Okay, I got that, all right, thanks, my mistake. All right, thanks, that's it for me.
I, I got, I got a few. Um, so, uh, let's see, um. So, do, I guess this is probably a question for Cheryl, um, did, did we get any, any um more information from uh Scott Ringler about um the S, uh, about an asset management plan? I know the, we had a couple emails that went back and forth.
Uh, nothing final, um, we can check with him tomorrow for an update, I know he looked at it, and um he said we had some initial information, but there would be some additional work that would be required.
Okay. Um, and then um, I, I guess just a general question, so, so when, when they were, so the, the, this past uh last week, they, they started doing some of the um, uh, televising of the um, uh sewer systems, you know, that, that we, that we had uh planned for, for this year, and one of them was right by uh, by my house, and I ended up talking to the, to the, the guys that were doing it, and mostly because they, they pulled out this, I mean, they pulled out a chunk that was probably about the size of a, of a globe. Um, and it was, it was basically, you know, congeled, congealed grease, um, and they had a lot of problems getting that out, and as we were talking, he said, oh yeah, he said, you shouldn't, you should have seen uh what, what we got uh over at all, at, over by Alga's, it was one of the biggest, you know, big chunks of um, you know, grease that, that, that we've, that, that he had seen. Um, and I know Cheryl, we've talked about this, but I was just saying, providing that as, as background for everybody else. Um, so is, is there something that we can do to prevent this from happening? I mean, I know, I know we've, we've uh, uh fined Al, Alga's before, but obviously, you know, uh, it, it's still an issue, not just with Alga's, but, you know, with, with other establishments as well, because, you know, I'm, I'm not any, you know, where my house is, is nowhere near, um, you know, uh, uh restaurant, but yet we still, it still worked, worked its way down the, the um, the, the system, and, and ended up with a, a, a big block, blockage, so um, I'm just trying to think, is there anything proactively that we can do to can, to get this, this issue so it doesn't keep happening?
Yeah, well, in regards to that one particular issue, we've been in conversations with the um, the property manager, and they're at least interested in trying to get the matter addressed. They asked from it's, for some additional information, including um the televising pictures um to ascertain if we can identify uh what was specific to their site, and any associated cost increase that um our televising contractor has incurred. So we're having those conversations. The other part that you're asking is that, you know, in terms of being proactive, I don't know if we can institute a, you know, a periodic inspection to make certain that um any of the restaurants aren't dumping grease in appropriately into the system, so we may have to look at something like that. Um, and unfortunately, if the grease made it all the way to near you, it may not have even come from Alga's, it could have been from a restaurant um on the other side of the street. So just asking, ascertaining who is making the system problematic, and how can we be proactive? So I'll be talking with the building official relative to what can we do to make certain the restaurants are complying with our local ordinances and procedures to keep the system clean.
Yeah.
Just, just to, to add to that, I have, I did have a conversation with Jim Wright this week about that, and, and that is something that he has the ability to do under the property maintenance code, is to, to ensure that uh facilities with uh grease trap systems or grease collection systems are functioning properly, and they have to have those inspected and, and provide verification to the city, so I think that's something he's going to, he's going to push for code enforcement to do uh moving forward. Yeah, that would, that would be good. And then just to, just to be clear, uh, uh Cheryl, I mean, the, the, the Alga's, and then what happened over by my house, I think were two separate, uh, two separate issues, they weren't, they weren't the same, it wasn't coming down from, he didn't suspect that it was coming down from, from Alga's all the way down here. He thought maybe, um, I forgot the name of it already, um, the barbecue place, um, you're on mute, even, Ian, I didn't know what you said.
Eddie Smokes.
Yeah, Eddie Smokes, he said it might have been from Eddie Smokes, or, you know, when that was open, and, and so on, but yeah, definitely, I think we need to be pro, proactive about that. Um, and then the, the last thing I had was just a question for Scott, um, as to whether or not, um, if you had any uh further thoughts on, you know, mothballs that are, that are being used um as, as um, uh, I'm blanking on the word, I'm blanking on words on everything tonight, um, uh.
Rodents.
A pesticide, a pesticide.
Rodents.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's one of those things where I, I, I under, I mean, I know your email said that, you know, reading the box and what the intended use is, is potentially uh an EPA violation, uh, I think, I don't see any local enforcement that we could take under that. I think it's a, it's really hard for um. It's really hard for our police department to, to, because we, we don't have any ordinance like, like that, that say that you have to, uh, you know, um, it, and I'll use an example, we have, we've had, and I think in our community too, and I know in other communities there represent where neighbors have had issues with the, each other, and they end up using salt to kill plants, um, and that's like pretty obvious and what they're doing, um, and, and it's just a really difficult thing to, to prosecute someone for that. Given, and again, given that it's, like Ian said, people use it to control chipmunks and squirrels and stuff, I mean, so um singling out one resident uh that may be using them for other purposes, uh certainly is not, uh, I don't think it's something, a, a road that we should go down, so. Yeah, more, more than one, just to be clear, more than one resident, but yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Um, one other update I had for you, if you recall, you received some communications relative to precise MRI and their site plan, they have received administrative approval of their site plan, and I think the matter is more or less resolved, they were supposed to pick up their, um, was it the permit for the paving of the parking lot? I don't know if they've done that yet, but hopefully, um, we're able to move along now relative to that project.
That reminds me of one other.
Paving. What was that, sorry?
I, I was just going to say, that reminded me of one other, other thing, um, for, for you, Suzie, is there any, any um, any movement on uh the gas station?
They, all right, yeah, um, they have, what was it, the plumbing permit? I was just looking at that. Uh, they have, they pulled a plumbing permit.
In the building?
And, and then they've, uh, and then they're, oh, the HVAC and electrical is supposed to be happening soon, but no permits have been pulled for that. There, um, and I gotta, I, I need to look it up, um, but their, their permit overall, their approvals are getting very, very close to expiring anyways. Um, that is on my list of, of things to, uh, to do this week, is to make sure that uh Tarek is well aware of when his uh, his approvals are set to expire, and then, and get that taken in, taken care of. Um, let me see, it was a. I'm looking through my emails right now to see if I've got them quickly accessible. So, yeah, so that they, they've signed the contract for the building work, the plumber has started, and the electrician and HVAC were supposed to start. Um, they also have, um, their uh, another contract, contract for petroleum work was signed about, well, I guess about two weeks ago, and the gasoline tanks are scheduled for installation for the first week of December. So, sounds like they've got quite a bit um lined up and ready to go here, so, but I'll be in touch with him about his approvals.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Just one last thing, I just want to express my appreciation to Yvette Tally and the organization for um that, that uh kept the uh, the voting line in order and uh got our tallies out, quote unquote tallies out, in an orderly fashion. You like the pun on that, huh? Play on words, but I really appreciate it. Again, um, words cannot express how much I appreciate what you've done over the years, and uh you don't get enough credit, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
There you go.
Thank you.
Anything else? The last thing that we sent out, that the police department um is participating with pigs for wigs, and that is, they are, is a no shave November, which I think someone needs to tell, um, our city attorney, it's over a year and.
It's almost three years, two years now.
I'm sorry.
No shave November, you said?
Yep, and so they are, um, they are participating in the Wigs for Pigs campaign, and that is to help raise money for children battling diseases in Michigan, and here is one thing that was sent out to all of us, that if you want to have um t-shirts, um, there is an email that is on, in our emails, there's an email that you can send your t-shirt size in our email and phone number if you can call, but I, you know, if you want to support our police department in supporting kids with um childhood uh diseases.
Okay.
Anything else? Nobody? Wonderful. Well, you all have a uh great night, and we will talk to you soon.